I call the order of the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Wilson County Commissioner made an order to all of our guests that are here tonight and invite you to come back in the opportunities you have. This time I will turn the prayer and pledge over to Commissioner Costley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. First, before I call, my friend up here, I would like to ask that we observe a moment of silence in light of the events going on the past week and all the events that we've had of the crimes against political figures and what's going on in this country. I just ask you to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, I'd like to call up Pastor Charles Allen, Bullin Springs Baptist Church, Baxter, Tennessee. He's also the local vet at Cumberland. Well, he's not a vet. I really don't know what he does there. He does something at Cumberland Animal Hospital, but he's a good man, good friend of mine.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, I thank you so much for the opportunity to come here and serve you in such a way. And Father, I just pray for these men and women, Father, that you've called, God, the ones that you've named in Romans thirteen to yield the sword of righteousness, Father, to maintain order in our communities and to keep us safe. And Father, I just pray for them, that you'd protect them, God, as they navigate times like we've never seen before. And Father, I just ask that you'd be with each one. God, I thank you. I ask that you would give them vision to seek your will at this time, as they meet tonight, Father, and that they would do so in a way that pleases you well. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. This time, if you'd turn your attention to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Coach. This time, if you will, press your yes on your panel, record your presence at night's meeting. Commissioner Brown is out of commission tonight, and I have not heard from Commissioner Denton, but I do not see him. He's out tonight, okay? Thank you, sir.
Twenty-three present, two absent.
This time, we'll have public comment period. This time, this is not the one that is located about the rezonings that we have tonight. This will just be public comment period if anybody wants to speak towards the, just anything about they need to talk to the commission about. So this time, if you'd step forward to the back, state your name and address for the record, and this is your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Perry Neal. I'll keep this very, very brief, lest I stick my nose somewhere it doesn't belong here. I just wanted to make a brief comment about the step systems, and it would appear to me that maybe the residents of the county need something better than what we've got existing. How to get better, I'm gonna leave that up to you guys, but I just think that what we've got currently going right now, we need something better for the people that are having problems. We need something better for the people that are gonna have step systems coming down the road the next two or three years, which is probably where I'm in. You know, we're probably gonna have some in our neighborhood, and I hope we do something better in the future. Had a chance to meet Mr. Murphy outside. He's a great guy. First time I'd ever met him, he's a great guy, but I just hope we can do something to improve our step systems going forward. All right, got that out of the way. On a lighter note, I want to mention about the Crossroads Ballpark coming up Saturday, the fifty-year reunion. Invite each and every one of you guys from, I think it's three o'clock to about six o'clock. Gonna have free hamburgers, hot dogs, as long as they last. Got tons of inflatables for the kids, so if you've got kids or grandkids, bring them on out there. We're gonna give a special shout-out to Mayor Hutto here. We're gonna have a dunking booth, and guess who's gonna be front and center in the dunking booth?
I'll be there.
And I will, I'll be there. And on that note, we're looking for more volunteers for the dunking booth, so Commissioner Dow? But anyway.
I'll volunteer from the front.
Thank you, guys, for everything you do. Appreciate all the work, appreciate what y'all have done for Tucker's Crossroads. Thank you, guys.
I'm Ken Young, twelve-twenty-one Shop Springs Road. Wilson County is largely the sum total of all the decisions ever made by its county commissioners. You have important decisions to make tonight. One is the appointment of a commissioner to the Water Authority. Honesty and decency are necessary traits, but those aren't enough. Friendship is not enough, not with the authority in the shape it's in now. We need someone willing to ask the right questions, willing to lead, someone with the experience to work that organization out of serious trouble. The incumbent is honest and decent, but for too many years, he watched as small problems grew into emergencies. And he's Chris Lieber's choice. Collect someone else. The Good Ship Water Authority is run aground. It's sinking. Who's on board? The taxpayer, the customer, the new school, thirsty citizens who are promised water, voters whose health is threatened by overflowing sewer systems? We are all on board. In all of history, there's only been one person responsible for a shipwreck. Of course, that's the captain of the ship. The captain of the Water Authority is its chairman of the board. The mayor suggested that a deckhand return here to explain why the Good Ship Water Authority hit the reef. No. Only if you're okay with another song and dance would you ask the executive director to come back here. And yes, he has much to answer for, but his appearance would be a waste of your time when there's no time to waste. You can't fire him or promote him. You can't tell him what to do or what not to do. That's for the Water Authority Board. If you want information you can act on, you must hear from the captain. What you need are straight answers to important and difficult questions. Why does Adena still have a monopoly? What started the problem at the school? Why has T-Deck issued so many fines? What about the allegations of falsified records? Where did all the ARP money go? Why is there a threat of a federal lawsuit for polluting our drinking water? These and many more. Only the captain can explain these things. Only the captain can tell us, how did the ship run aground? How will he salvage it? And if he can, give us the confidence that he can steer us back to a safe course. The county, parents, teachers, students, and the citizens deserve nothing less. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matthew Gwynn, are you here for the rezoning? Matthew Gwynn for the rezoning?
Nathan for the rezone. Yes, sir.
Got you. Do you have a Matthew Gwynn here? Ma'am? Well, it's nowhere close to... Oh, that's exactly right, Diane. I hate to even admit you're right on that. Okay, then it says Matthew Gwynn. My bad. It says Nathan. It looks like Matthew. Okay, no more public comments, and I'll shut up here. We do have another public comment.
Hi, everybody. Tom May here. Nine forty-five point few circle in Mount Juliet. I wanted to bounce, or just kind of piggyback off what Mr. Young said. Y'all need to bring in Mr. Chambers. Need to hear from the captain of the ship. You know, I'm a former military guy. You don't go to the sergeant and ask him what went wrong. You go right to the top. What went wrong with the planning? Who authorized this? Who authorized that? That's what you need to do, and I really hope you do it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? CNN will close public comment period. Remove the report from Steering Committee. Commissioner Fields.
Yes, this is the Steering Committee met on Thursday, September the fourth, in regular session, and you have to have a copy of those minutes or in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Adoption of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everyone should have a copy of the minutes. Excuse me, the agenda. I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Consent agenda?
No consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, we have two there. Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, we do. I'm sorry. Resolutions twenty-five-nine-one and twenty-five-nine-two, they both involve lying out of transfers, no additional funds involved. I move that they be approved.
Aye.
Got a motion and second, no money involved?
Both.
So we need to vote. All right?
No new money.
No new money. I got you. Please cast your vote for the consent agenda. Lot I'm gonna transfer in the Trustee Department and the Health Department. Commissioner Clark? All hearts and minds are good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-three and two.
Twenty-three and zero. Resolution passes. Commissioner Evans, you'd like to have a question?
I do have a question, ma'am.
Okay.
I think that we need to adjust the agenda to have the minutes prior to the rezoning request tonight.
Yeah, we can do that. We talked about that earlier. I think Commissioner Fields may have forgotten.
Okay. So we'd like to move the minutes up on the agenda, is what the question is, so we can make a correction there because it deals with what we're gonna talk about in the rezoning tonight.
Correct.
I guess you'd like to move it up to right after consent agenda, would be right now. Don't hear a motion to do so.
Move.
And a second. Any discussion about what we just talked about? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll deal with the minutes now and the corrections that need to be here. Commissioner Fields?
The Minutes Committee met in regular session on Thursday, September the fourth. A copy of those minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed, but before we ask for the reading of the minutes, then Commissioner Evans has asked to address the commission about a correction that needs to be noted.
Do you hear a motion to approve? I got the motion. Do you hear a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now.
Mr. Chairman, there's a fairly significant change that needs to be made with the minutes. Page four, paragraph four, that paragraph deals with the rezoning request that's before us tonight. The way the minutes read, then it reads that we approved that request last month. What we approved last month was the applicant's request to defer to this month. So I would make a motion that we amend the minutes to reflect that.
Motion to amend the minutes to make the correction. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I just got them backwards.
Okay.
They were both deferred last month. One was deferred by us, one was deferred by the applicant.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
We're now back on regular schedule. We have no special recognition, to my knowledge.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, so we moved the whole thing up there, not just got it. Okay. Now, we're back on session. We're ready. No special recognition. We'll do public hearing this time on two of them, and I'll ask a motion to go out of session.
Move.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was pretty confusing.
There's only one on near the business.
Okay.
My bad.
I put on there what you said.
All the same? Got you.
A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM in the County Commission Room of the Wilson County Courthouse at two twenty-eight East Main Street. Items for consideration: Application has been made by property owner Mercuri iOS Ventures LLC requesting a land use plan amendment from low-density residential area to high-density, high-intensity commercial area. The applicant also seeks to rezone the same property from R1 rural residential to C3 highway commercial planned use development. The property contains approximately 5.01 acres and is located at thirty-four-ten Mercuri Road and is further referenced as parcel thirty-six-oh-one on Wilson County Tax Map one thirty-seven. Copy of this request has been on file with the Wilson County Planning Office and has been available during regular business hours.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this property? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Nathan Quinn, twenty-nine-twenty-five Berry Hill Drive. Mayor Hutto, I'd like to apologize for my penmanship. I'm not Matthew Gwynn.
Apologize for my reading.
So we, the property we're rezoning is tied to a larger development that we're doing, and after talking with Commissioner Hobbs and Commissioner Evans, I wanted to just give a quick rundown of all the work we've done so far and where we're at in the process because there's significant off-site improvements associated with this, and this rezone is actually a part of those improvements. So the picture on the left is the property about six weeks ago. The picture on the right is the property today. For reference, that's a hundred and eighty acres that were in the process of mass grading. Right behind these two properties, we expect the roadway plans just north of the bridge over Hurricane Creek, all the way to the Love's Gas Station, to be approved, which will allow us to start with widening improvements and utility relocations along that corridor. That also captures flood improvements at the intersection. I'm sure everyone in this room's familiar with that intersection flooding to the tune of eight to ten feet in the right flood condition, so a part of what you have before you tonight is a part of that drainage solution to convey all of the water that floods today when the two injection wells reach their capacity and allows it to drain above ground, all the way crossing the property under rezone tonight, and all the way to Hurricane Creek above ground to solve that problem. Separately, we're gonna be widening, raising, and lengthening the bridge over Hurricane Creek. We're preparing to submit those full engineering drawings at the beginning of October. And tonight, with the rezone, we're gonna be able to memorialize our drainage improvements and the piece that we deferred to be heard in the next two to four meetings. We're working with staff and the Commissioners Hobbs and Commissioner Evans on the logistics to have a traffic signal installed near the intersection of Love's, which is Couchville Pike and Couchville Industrial. I know, I went through a lot. Hopefully, I did it in under three minutes, but if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them when the item's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Anyone else wishing to speak on this property? Seeing none, or a motion to go back into session? All in favor, say aye. Christopher?
All right. Commissioners, the following application is presented to the Full County Commission on Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. That request was deferred till tonight's meeting. Application has been made by property owner Mercuri iOS Ventures LLC requesting a land use plan amendment from low-density residential area to high-density, high-intensity commercial area. The applicant also seeks to rezone the same property from R1 rural residential to C3 highway commercial with a planned unit development overlay. Property contains approximately 5.01 acres and is located at thirty-four-ten Mercuri Road, as further referenced as thirty-six-oh-one Wilson County Tax Map one thirty-seven. The land use plan and rezoning request was presented to the Wilson County Planning Commission on June twentieth, which was a Friday, and is being forwarded to the Wilson County Commission with positive recommendations for the land use amendment and rezoning. Some stipulations of the conditions of approval in that rezoning, I want to make you all aware of it, since it is a PUD. There are four on this. Roadway improvements of the Mercuri Road and Besta Road that are part of the Mercuri Road industrial master plan that was approved by this body on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four must be completed prior to Wilson County granting driveway access onto Mercuri Road from this site. This site does have access onto Couchville Industrial if they wanted to go ahead and utilize that before the road improvements were done, but the road improvements will have to be completed before it'll have access onto Mercuri Road, as it is not currently an industrial road section. Mass grading, site stormwater area drainage, and paving improvements can be performed while the roadway improvements are in progress. Enhanced landscape screening and privacy fencing will be required along the right-of-way of Mercuri Road. Also, unique to this site, county stormwater will waive formal detention requirements with respect to this property in accordance with the approved flood study pertaining to the regional drainage improvement requirements associated with the Mercuri Road industrial master plan that was approved on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Water quality improvements are still going to be required, as that is a state requirement, but this is to allow the site, as opposed to normal detention requirements, there will be a through drain that is in the overall drainage plan to flow through this property to get everything to Hurricane Creek once those sinkholes are inundated. Happy to answer any other questions you may have regarding this rezoning.
Commissioner Hobbs, in your district.
I don't know if she would.
Do you have a motion to approve the rezoning?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This property is integral to the larger development that was approved last year on Mercuri, and I would make a motion that we approve this request subject to the stipulations just read by staff.
I got a motion and second. Any other discussion now? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Christopher.
I do not have anything else for her. I do want to make you all aware that our public meeting for our land use plan will be at Alumni Hall, Cumberland Alumni Hall, and that is September twenty-fifth. At five-thirty is when that's, is when the doors open. You all will be getting an email at the end of this week, and I encourage you to forward that to as many people as you wish, and I encourage you also to attend. Have a great night.
Thank you. Ms. Amanda Cook from the Be Smart County Lead on Gun Safety. Put a gun safe lock on your desk, and it's there for you. If you know any of your citizens that would like more, please let me know, and she said she'd be glad to get them to you. Also, just so you know, Mr. Daniel Sampson has been added to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and that's in place of Mr. Will Smith, who resigned just recently for some other job opportunities. I will give you just an update here, if I can. T-Deck, you're having a resolution in front of you tonight. They'd ask T-Deck, Adenas, and the Water Authority to work together to take care of your school system. They actually got together the next day and have made appropriations. I heard from Joshua Jenkins with Adenas. I heard from Britton Dotson from T-Deck, and today got a call from Joe Haddix. So they are working to free up the school system from the Adenas issues that are with the other part of their violation. Everything will stay in place just like it is. The only difference is they're gonna put a meter on the sewage that comes out of the school, and just that amount will be put back into those drip fields there, so we'll only get ours. And so T-Deck is working. I still would ask you to pass your resolution tonight, but we appreciate them coming together. I also got a conversation with Brad Harris with T-Deck as well. So those are positive progress that have been made there. And I want to address Mr. Murphy's appointment that you're gonna hear in just a few minutes. From my seat, where I sit at, when I look at appointments, and there's two ways this works. One, you have elections, and I'll bring you a recommendation, just in case you don't have somebody in mind, and then you vote and do that, and you're fully in charge. You're fully in charge on both of them, really. And then the other one is an appointment. I gave you an appointment, and then you can confirm it. If you don't confirm it, then I gotta go back to the drawing board and get you another one. Well, Ms. Holder was in here that time, and I had no issues with Ms. Holder, but I felt the pressure of the commission, the pressure or the will of the commission, to say, "We would like one of our people on there," and that night, I was fine with Commissioner Kurtz being a part of that, and then got on that board at that particular time. We made that move that night. Tonight's a little different for me. I have, you know, as I look at the appointments, and I don't want to get sideways with Mr. Franklin. I mean, Mr. Franklin talked today, or Michael Swope sent me, or called me back recently and said, "Hey, I would like to see somebody else put on there," and he gave me a name, and he gave me several reasons of why he thought somebody else ought to be on there. I know me and Mr. Perry Neal had that conversation as well, and I know Zindel said he got a call from Mr. Young that he would be, you know, talking about not nominating somebody else. When I look at appointments, I do call and find out, does the person show up for meetings or do they ask hard questions? And Zindel works for us at the Expo Center, and he's come to me and asked me hard questions before, so I think he can ask hard questions. I don't know if he does them for sure in the meeting or not, but when I look at this problem that we got, I look, and I've actually pulled every one of the step systems that are in the county, just because you can go to TDOT and T-Deck and pull each one of them off and find out what the problem is. And I asked Chris Lieber, which is sitting back there, to come next month and address you, and what I'd ask him to do is, he's told me that they have made some improvements. One thing they did was to hire a person that actually is just gonna look at Adenas and just the step systems altogether. The next thing that he said they did was they was gonna require now, anytime a subdivision goes in, for all the soils to be built on the whole subdivision, regardless if they do them in four or five phases. They're gonna build them all up front. The next thing he said was that they're gonna ask them to have fifty percent more soils than what's required, which pushes it from a three-hundred-gallon minimum they have today to a four-hundred-and-fifty-gallon minimum. And I said, "Well, I would like for you to tell our commission that." You know, I know we was referred to a while ago as a deckhand, and maybe the captain needs to come, and that really doesn't bother me one way or another, but when I look at where I'm at, I think you could replace the whole board if you wanted to, but until these changes are made, that's where the problem's at. And me and Commissioner Franklin talked today about the, you know, working in the urban growth boundary and their competition there, and that's been handled by, hadn't been handled by Mount G yet, I don't think, but those are things that can be worked out. So when I look at Mr. Murphy, I stand by that appointment. I'm not here to argue with you, argue with anybody else for that matter, but I look and I stand, when he stands when he's on two feet, that's who I stand with, and I don't, if I thought that taking Mr. Murphy out would make a difference and make our problems go away, I'd be glad to do that, but I don't feel like that, and that's why I stay with that, stay with that appointment. Again, I don't want to be at odds with you at all. I just want to kind of tell you where I was on that and how I feel about the people at our point. I will let you know this, too, because I think it's important. The ones on that committee, which Mr. Murphy frees up, he's an at-large member. Mr. Comer is the finance, which is required for a finance person. Mr. Chambers is an engineer, which is required. Jeff Jones is in industry and commerce, which is required, and Mr. Kurtz is a lawyer. So those are all spelled out. It has to be somebody of that nature. Mr. Murphy's is an at-large member, and so it could be anyone in that district. I'll answer any questions if you need me to on this. I just wanted to get Michael Swope's, he wanted his wishes told to you tonight, so I wanted to get that in there as well. Anything from anybody for me? Thank you for that. We'll move on. Elections and appointments, do you have a notary list in your, are you to hear a motion to approve them?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chairperson, you need to elect a chairperson for the next twelve months. Do I hear nominations?
Move Randall Hutto.
Second.
Any other nominations?
None.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thank you for this honor to do this for you. I really do. I just want you to know that from my heart. Commission chairperson, pro tem. Do you have a motion to nominate that person?
Wendell Marlowe. Second.
Any discussion? Any other nominations?
Move nomination cease.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee elections now. At this time, you'll need to elect four budget members to serve, and the floor is open for nominations as we speak.
Nominate Tommy Jones.
Tommy Jones.
Nominate Diane Weathers.
Diane Weathers.
Justin Smith.
Mr. Justin Smith. Any other nominations?
Wendell Marlowe.
Mr. Wendell Marlowe.
Move the nomination cease. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No need to vote then, are they?
Yeah, they need to vote now. You got them in there. Those are your four of them.
Okay. If I only have four? I still have a paper about it?
They cut it off.
Okay.
To approve those four.
Oh, I thought that's what we did.[1748.51] Oh, I thought that's what we did. Motion to approve these four for your budget members.
Move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Go to Finance Committee. Need motions for Finance. Chairman?
I'd like to nominate Beth Bowman.
nominate Kevin Costley.
Nominate Robert Fields.
Nominate Blake Hall.
Move nomination, we got one more?
We got four?
We got four.
Nomination ceased.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Who nominated?
Who nominated? Commissioner Hawke and Commissioner Chandler. I got four for the nominations. I had a nomination to cease, so we'll vote on that first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now to vote for those, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Fields, and Commissioner Hall for the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fair enough. Okay. Ethics Committee, you are to confirm my appointment for five members to serve a one-year term on the Ethics Committee. Upon your confirmation, I would like to appoint Commissioner Jeremy Rich, Commissioner Jeremy Hobbs, Commissioner Chris Dow, Commissioner Rick Brown, and Mr. Earl Ray.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Water Authority Board appointment, you are to confirm my appointment of one member to serve a five-year term on the Water Authority. I would like to recommend for you, Mr. Zindel Murphy.
Don't you prefer? Second.
Discussion. Ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's do a voice vote, I mean, do a pro-call, please. Sorry. No, you can do it. I mean, you can do it.
Are you in there from there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Said he wasn't feeling good today.
Two. Yeah. We all re-voted for chairman.
Sheriff Bryan is on assignment tonight. He said he would not be here for his report, but if you needed anything from him, he said to give him a call.
And when he's not here to report, I don't want to prove in the report that he don't give me.
Got it.
Is that anybody?
If you want Mr. Murphy to be the Water Authority member, then you vote yes. If you don't, vote no, please. Commissioner Scruggs, Commissioner Keith, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Dow. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twelve yes, eleven no, two yes.
Okay.
Take thirteen.
Takes thirteen. Not a majority on that, are they? Okay, so we need to re-vote?
Only if somebody makes a motion on the prevailing side to reconsider.
And what?
If somebody on the prevailing side will make a motion to reconsider, you could re-vote, but you need 13 votes for this to pass. Motion to reconsider, and I guess second?
Second.
Okay, so all of-
Vote on that, see if you can get 13 votes.
Okay. We'll need to vote on that to reconsider. If you'd like to reconsider the votes, what you're voting on now, if you just want to reconsider to re-vote again, you'd vote yes. If you don't want to reconsider, vote no. Take thirteen again to do that. Please cast your vote to reconsider to vote again. Commissioner Dow, Commissioner Keith, and Commissioner Breeze. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Eleven yes, twelve no.
So we'll leave it like it is.
Hey, would you like to bring-
Somebody back?
That's my-
We'll do it. Okay. Let's move forward now with the report from the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
And Director's Report, Mr. Chief Brian Newberry.
Make it real, real, real quick. Report's in your packet, you have any questions?
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Voice, yes.
Yes. All in favor say aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all very much.
Sir, report from law enforcement committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
No report.
And Sheriff Bryan is not here, but his report is in the packet. There are motion to-
Motion approved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education to be met Thursday, September 4th, Minister in your packet, would they be received? Fine.
Any question, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Director's of School Report, Mr. Travis Mayfield.
How are you, sir? Good evening. You have that Mr. Luttrell's report in your packet. One thing that was a late add-on, the most recent board meeting, there was a election for board chair, that is now Joe Padilla, and vice chair is Greg Holman. So those are two changes that are not in your packet. Of course, you see our enrollment's holding steady, about 20,800 students now, it's leveled out. Transportation, I don't know if you've heard about it, but you probably have, we're short drivers. We continue to try to recruit. We're going to conduct a survey of all of our constituents to see if they would be in favor of a three-tier start time, which would allow us to utilize those drivers over three tiers as opposed to two. We'll see what happens in regards to that. That would mean change in school time. So we also have a community meeting on the rezoning for Central Pike Elementary that's going to take place September 23rd at Wilson Central Auditorium, 6:00 p.m. The communities affected will be Rutland Elementary, basically the south and the east side of Rutland Zone, the north side of Gladil Elementary Zone, and the far west side of South Side. So those are the three areas that will be affected. Construction update on Central Pike Elementary is progressing very well. They anticipate we will, that building will be turned over us probably after, right after the first of the year. So they're doing a, they're going really fast. Any questions?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a complaint from a parent whose daughter was a student at Wilson Central, and on the day that Mr. Kurtz was assassinated, there were students celebrating that on the campus of Wilson Central. My question to the administration for the school board is, is that appropriate on school property?
I don't believe so. Does the parent reached out to the school administration?
That I do not know, but I will find out.
I would encourage the parent to reach out to the administration of Wilson Central.
Commissioner Breeze?
I know you're talking about reach your system for start times. Have you announced those three start times that you're putting out in the survey? Okay.
I can, there's a range.
Okay.
So it would be somewhere in the seven to 7:30, eight to 8:30, nine to 9:30.
Okay, so it would be 7:30, seven to 7:30 for elementary, still?
I can't answer that, and here's why. If you take the current number of routes that we have, and out of the both, right now we go 7:30 and 8:30. You add all those up, and then instead dividing by two, you divide them by three. So that's where you get the most use out of all of your bus drivers by having those routes divided into three. I don't, I haven't dug down deep enough to know if it would break up evenly with elementary, middle, and high, or it would be done in zones. There's a lot of different ways to do it. Ultimately, what it means is, somebody's going to go to school at 7:30, a different group at 8:30, another group at 9:30, or you could say the 15 mark, if that's what they wanted to do. So, right now, it's just, we have a, we have a problem. Here is a potential situation. Is our community open to the idea of exploring this? That's what the survey's about.
Okay, thank you for the details.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Thank you, sir. Report from Public Buildings, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Development Tourism, Commissioner Clark.
No report.
No report. Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
Health and Welfare Committee met on September 4th, 2025, at Mount G. Upstairs conference room, your minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Insurance, Commissioner McFarlane.
Insurance met 28 August and 9 September at 5:00, and across the hall in the conference room, move to be approved.
We had two sets, is that both of them, Commissioner? Got you. Any discussion or question? All in favor say aye. Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Legislative ad hoc, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Planning zoning, Commissioner McFarlane.
Planning zoning met 2 September and 9 September at 5:30. The minutes in your packet move to be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban type facility board, Commissioner Scruggs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
I heard you last month talk about how much you don't like having things set on your desk the night of the county commission meeting, so tonight I made sure there were three. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
The summary financial statement for August, I looked at that, and really, it's almost a mirror image of where we were in August of last year, so I don't really have anything to say on that. The other two things, the reports on debt obligation, these are the leases that you approved for the vehicle cameras for the sheriff's department, and also for the tasers for the sheriff's department, and those are considered issuances of debt. So anytime we issue debt, we have to go over these, but fortunately, these are really simple. They are 0% interest. The payments on the tasers, or on the car cameras, rather, are $37,244.04 every year for three years, 2025 through 2027, and there is no cost of issuance. On the tasers, 0% interest. The payments are $19,839.42, basically, for three years, 2025 through 2027. Again, no interest, no expenses associated with the issue. So now we have fulfilled that obligation. I don't really have anything else for you unless you have any questions for me.
Any question, Mr. Maynard?
Move to approve.
All in favor say aye. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Move to be met Thursday, September 4th, in the sheriff's conference room, Minister in your packet, I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 25-9-3, approving the request for Southwest, excuse me, South Wilson Sewer Access Committee to petition the Wilson County Water and Wastewater Authority for sessions of additional service.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a record reflect it was unanimous.
Resolution 25-9-4, requesting and encouraging all supporting groups to work together to find the quickest solution to move an approved step system to Lagarto Elementary School.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 25-9-5, directing the county attorney to appeal the judgment entered in the case of White versus Wilson County.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's take a, say aye, man.
Sir?
I'll say aye.
No.
Nope.
They got call for no's.
Okay, let's call for a vote, Tim.
No, you just need call for no's.
Oh, just call for no's? Okay. So I got Commissioner Kurtz and Commissioner Jones, any other no's?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Smith. Anybody else?
Okay. So the majority still carries?
So there was, five that said no.
Got five that said, I got one, two, three, four, five that said no. Everybody else should appeal, correct?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to talk about a stay? Do we need to talk about a stay?
No.
Got you. Okay. Commissioner Marlowe?
Hmm?
We're ready to go.
Resolution 25-9-6, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to county clerk.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Keith?
No.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-7, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from capital projects fund to election commission.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-8, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from Fund 124 to Expo Center.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Hobbs? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-9, to approve the attached grant contract between Tennessee Department of Health and Wilson County Government.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-10, to approve a transfer to reflect a grant amendment for libraries.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-11, authorizing Wilson County to join the state, Tennessee, and other local governments in amending the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement and approving the related settlement agreements.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-12, to approve WEMA entering, entering into a cooperative purchase agreement with National Purchasing Partners.
Got a motion, a second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr., all hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-13, to amend the budget appropriation resolution by approving one-time Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 26-2.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-9-14, to amend the budget appropriation resolution by approving one-time Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 26-3.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kurtz? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three and oh, resolution passes. Any old business to come before the body? Any new business? Commissioner Breeze?
I just have a question that's brought to me by a citizen. Evidently, at the Sewer Access Committee meeting that happened recently, the committee decided that they wanted to refund $300,000 for an issue. If you go back and read our county rules for the county commission, Rule Number 37 specifically says, "Committees cannot obligate the county involving money without approval of the commission." So my question is, does that committee have the authority to issue that refund without working it through the Budget Committee and then through the county commission? And I'm generally asking that question because it was asked to me by a citizen, and I don't have an answer, so I guess I'm asking Mike, if you could.
I want to defer to Mr. Maynard. Was that center reserve account that we took in for certain things to be done, and it's been impossible for them to be done now? So I'll defer to him on that.
Yeah, I didn't feel like we needed a budget amendment on that, simply because we're going to refund it back out of the revenue line it came in on, but it may be more appropriate, you know, to run it for. I didn't feel, I didn't feel like it was necessary myself, once it was negotiated, you know, we sent, we sent Mike to negotiate it with whoever the other side was. So if we want to do a budget amendment, we can, but I can also just refund it back out of the revenue line we took it in on.
Is this because, since this is not taxpayer dollars, and it was given as a deposit to do something, and now that agreement's not going to be done, is that, does that change the rule that she's talking about, where that's not really, it is our money, but not really?
Yeah. I don't know that it changes anything.
I guess the, at the end of the day, my question, and I'm, I'm asking Mike, and I should have asked Mike before, so my bad. My question being that basically, if we're, if we're going to refund this money, and they paid it into the, the line that the sanitary sewer access fee money goes into, my thought was, we could just refund it back out of that same line, and it wouldn't require a budget amendment. That was my thought.
Yeah, I concur with that, but I mean, if we're going to get into a situation like we did on the southern thing, if somebody's complaining about it running through there, it'd be so pretty good.
Yeah. I mean, we can, we can definitely take it back through and run, run it through a budget, budget amendment.
So that answer your question, to get back then, it's going to be run back through another procedure?
It does, and like I said, I don't have an opinion on this. I just, Madison's just asking this question, which point I'm asking.
One of the questions I've got, just speaking frankly here, is, are we sitting any precedent here, because I believe there are other departments in this government that we refund money without bringing it through here. Am I incorrect on that?
Aren't businesses-
I don't-
What's the cleanest way to do it?
Cleanest way to do it would be, as Commissioner Breeze has suggested, or someone through her has suggested. My point is, if somebody else raises that on WEMA, or the Sheriff's Department, or the libraries, or somebody giving refunds, we don't want to be doing forty or fifty resolutions each month, where we refunded $2 from the library.
Mr. Maynard?
Well, it's, it's rare. I'm just trying to, I'm thinking about what Mike said, has anybody else done this? And I would imagine, if we went back, we would find somewhere along the way, somebody's paid adequate facilities tax, and then probably not gone forward with the development, possibly gotten refunded. I'm, I'm trying to think of where we might do refunds.
There is, and the adequate, there's a provision for the board zoning the fields to refund that money.
Okay.
It doesn't come back through here, or the Budget Committee, or anything like that.
Yeah.
I'm not really arguing against what you've suggested. What I'm saying is, I guess it's one of those things, be careful what you ask for, you might get it.
Would it make sense to clarify the rule about this, just in general? And again, I'm asking the question, I'm not, I guess that's a question for the Rules Committee, but-
Would that be a finance policy?
Yeah, it might be. We could certainly take a stab at making, making one on, specifically regarding refunds, what's required, but whatever rule you make, you're always going to find something that's sitting right on the outer edge of it, that you're going to have to-
Got it.
-try to figure, does this fall in that or out, you know?
You would just study that and bring it back to us next month?
I will. I'll take a look.
Okay. Commissioner Glover? He said he'll, he'll study that and get it back to us. I have some other people in here that, that's not up there now. Anybody, Commissioner Jones?
Since we're getting appoint anybody to the Water Board tonight, what will be the process to move forward with that?
I'll bring you another name back next, I'll bring you a name back next month. Mike texted me and said, because, just because it didn't fail, I could bring Zindal Murphy back next month, or somebody to you, and he will serve until that time.
But under the holdover doctrine, Commissioner, in the state of Tennessee, if you're holding a position, and your replacement's not elected, you hold over until they are elected.
I've got one more thing. As Chairman of the Sewer Access Committee, the committee very well done, the proper process, we contacted the Finance Director and the County Attorney, and I'm not trying to put that on y'all's back, but I don't know who else to refer to in a matter like that. So that's the process we went through.
No, you, you did what I, what I recommended. I recommended refunding it back out of the line it came in on, so that's what I recommended.
Commissioner Hall?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to formally request that Don Chambers be here next month.
Okay. Mr. Gentry?
A, just a little bookkeeping from the Roberts rules. When we nominate from the floor, we don't need the, we don't need to close nominations. It's up to the Chair. If there are no further nominations, the Chair closes it.
Okay.
And in addition to that, for the elections, if there are four people to be elected, and you only have four, the Chair basically says they're elected by acclamation, and you don't need a motion on that either.
Thank you.
Okay, just for future references. We don't elect very many times, but when we do, we always get that motion to close nominations. If there are no more nominations coming to you as a Chair, you can say, "The nominations are closed."
Thank you.
Thank you.
And tonight, it happened pretty fast, and I thought you guys had already made your mind up, so that's reason, I just, I was a little lost myself. So thanks for clarifying that for me.
That's the way Roberts says to do it.
And Roberts is a good guy.
Three votes, when we didn't need any votes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. You may have to scoot me on that when we get through here, just so I got it right. Commissioner McFarlane?
You said you'd bring a name back. Next month, can not a name be nominated from the floor?
No.
No, sir.
Cannot? It has to come from the Mayor?
Okay. And we, and that's what I was trying to say earlier when we did with Commissioner Kurtz, there was only one. I've had two or three names given to me, and I need to go back and study those before we do that. Because like Mr. Murphy, he represented the Stateville area, and that, I thought that was important. Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I guess my question's going to be, are you going to bring his name back next month, Mr. Murphy?
I do not know that yet.
How do you, I guess, gather, or when will you know that? How do you, how does that go through?
Well, I had his name mentioned, and, and you guys were not, you just didn't approve it tonight, you didn't necessarily kill it, you didn't approve it. So then I had two or three names mentioned to me in the meantime, so what I will do is go back and again, look at qualifications, and I, I try to spread them out as much as we can, it doesn't have to be, but like, you know, we have Commissioner Kurtz is kind of towards the Tucker's Crossroads area, Mr. Murphy's down in the Stateville area, I've got Comer's at the 231 area. So I looked at those today to kind of see where everybody was for making that call, but I'll do that.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kurtz?
Yeah, just, first of all, thank the Commission for placing me and confirming me on the Water Authority, and I feel like I need to address a few things. There's a lot of things that play into the fact of our school being held hostage, and that's basically what happened.
Correct.
That school not opening, and I'll say this, and if they're watching, they're watching, but I feel like TDEC held that school hostage from opening. There are some fault on other parties. I think there was some overwatch on the Water Authority, and I met with Mr. Louber, and I suggested that we have an individual watchdog, Adenus. I think Adenus also has a lot of fault, because they were supposed to correct the system 17 years ago, and it hadn't been corrected. There, there was also a change in some plans along the way for onsite versus offsite. And I'll say that I sit right next to Zindal, and the, the unique perspective that he brings to the Water Authority is, he's one of the few even sitting in this room that don't have water at their house, which is a very unique perspective. And I, you know, to, to think what needs to happen and what doesn't need to happen. I have a vote, and I cast my vote, but I think everybody needs to understand that, I think a lot of this centered around the school, and the school being held hostage. And that's, it's, it's not necessarily anybody's fault inside this county. I blame TDEC because they gave permits, and then they reneged, and they took those back. I have it sitting on my desk at work. So for all of that, I, I think, you know, for us, not to consider the Mayor's nomination, and, and I would even say, I would step down and resign if we could go backwards, if that's what it took, because I think that how it went down the last time, maybe not was the best way to set a precedent on how we do things. I think that I've, I've been effective on the Water Authority and some of the things, but if that's what it took to back up, I would do that, and we could put Ms. Holden back on, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you for those comments. Anything else, anybody, before we go home? Thank y'all.